We are ready. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of November 3rd, 2025. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the Northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic, with its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The business of the city councils as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an item shall come forward after the clerk reads that item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for City Council Meeting of November 3rd, 2025 is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Welcome, Mayor.
Hello, good afternoon. Jefferson Carlson, members of the council. It's great to be backed for another presentation of the Mayor's Award of Excellence, this one for June 2025, and it goes to Wade Noel. Wade is a supervisor with our Parks and Recreation Department. Wade was nominated in the categories of community engagement, civic innovation, and cultural vitality. He was nominated by Supervisor Ryan Molling for his work to organize the Lincoln Youth Track and Field Meet this past spring. This free meet provides youth ages six to thirteen the chance to take part in events like the 100 and 200 meter dash. Trying to do yards and meters stuff. Baseball and softball throws, and the standing and running long jump. To ensure the success of the meet, Wade built relationships with key community partners, introduced new technologies to drive efficiency, and promoted it to a wide range of youth and families. And his efforts at inclusivity helped expand access to youth sports for children and families all across our city. In his nomination letter, Molling noted that under Wade's leadership, participation surged from 119 athletes last year to over 250 this year. And as participation among young athletes and their families increased, Wade-led efforts to more than double the team of volunteers involved, from roughly fifteen to over thirty volunteers, who assisted with timing the races and making public announcements. Molling emphasized, quote, "Wade Noel has not only sustained but grown an important community tradition. His dedication, creativity, and leadership have enriched the lives of hundreds of Lincoln's youth." So Wade, thank you so much for leading the way so that more of our youth can chase their dreams. Your dedication and innovation and model of servant leadership are exactly why I'm so pleased to be presenting you with the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Would you come forward? Well, with that, I'd like to invite forward our Lincoln Parks and Rec Director Maggie Stuckey-Ross to share some comments.
Thank you, Mayor Director Maggie Stuckey-Ross, and I've asked Holly Lewis to join me, our Assistant Director of Recreation, but I want to say to Wade, you know how much we value culture at our department, and collaboration, and teamwork, and smiles. You are a light in my day, a light in all of our days, and I'm so, so proud to work with you. Thank you so much, Wade.
Good afternoon, Holly Lewis, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, and I am pleased to share a little bit more information about Wade. He is a member of our athletics supervisor team, and he organizes and oversees the youth basketball, volleyball, flag football, and the track meet. He contributes to the day-to-day operations, all the adult leagues, and does a lot with our sports software as well. The track meet Wade is being recognized for has a long history, and thanks to Wade's efforts, it has grown bigger and better than ever to more than 250 participants this year. Even with as much work as Wade puts in the weeks prior, he needs lots of help, especially the day of the event. He reached out to numerous organizations, including the Lincoln Running Company, who recruited a good number of volunteers, and also reached out to a Huddle volunteer to build a program to make the results easier and faster and in real time. He worked with Lincoln Public Schools to ensure the smooth running of the event at Northwest UBT Stadium. I'd also like to take a second to recognize Teresa, Wade's wife, who also was found there bright and early that track meet morning, setting up and helping with the check-in process. She's also known to make a treat or two for the office, since she does deliver Halloween costumes. Wade is a communicator. If you ever wonder what Wade is doing, he's probably on the phone or talking to a parent or a coach at the front desk. He will answer your questions and recruit you at the same time. He reaches out to people and puts people at ease. He supplies volunteer coaches with resources, materials, and support so they are successful. He is easygoing and pretty unflappable, at least on the outside. If he's dealing with an unhappy parent, rule questions or challenges, data or budget updates, or complaints about the program, he'll listen, respond kindly, adjust course if needed, and get right back to work. He's quick to laugh and a pleasure to work with. Wade, thank you for your stewardship with long-lasting programs and your willingness to explore new adventures, communications, and ways to reach folks to introduce kids to the joy of sports.
Wade, would you like to come forward and say a few words?
Keep in mind, I am on the phone all day, so I don't usually do this. I just wanted to say thank you to Maggie, Holly, Melissa, and then my coworkers Ryan and Monica. Without Ryan and Monica, probably wouldn't be standing here today, so yeah, so it's a big testament to them and their confidence in me to keep things moving, so I appreciate everybody I get to work with every day, and at the end of the day, we just want to make a better experience for the kids, and that's what it's about at the end of the day. So I'm grateful to get up every day and get to do what I do, so thank you.
And we want to thank your wife as well for all of her volunteer effort, being voluntold, I'm not sure, volunteer voluntold, but thank you as well for supporting his service. We're very grateful. Any comments from the council?
I'd like to comment.
Councilman Duden.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Boy, I think Maggie and Parks and Rec is very lucky because I think they've obviously found a diamond in the rough with Wade, because it's obvious he's got the passion and dedication to do the work that he's doing, and I think Lincoln's very fortunate to have him, so good job, Wade.
Counsel, anything else?
Yes, thank you, Wade. Yeah, good work.
All right, well, thank you so much for allowing us this moment to honor one of our own.
What a happy group of employees.
Well, yeah, they get treats every now and then.
Let the room clear here just a second, so. All right, Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
Okay. Next, a reminder that due to Veterans Day holiday, we will not meet on November 10th of 2025. Next on our agenda will be our consent agenda, Sections 1, Sections 2, and 3.
Do we have any presentations on the consent agenda? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda items? If so, please come forward now.
Sheriff Carlson.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, I would, we have a couple of members here from the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees considering an appointment. I would just love for them to be able to come up and introduce themselves a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Welcome.
Thank you, Kate Bowles, President and CEO of the Community Health Endowment. I'm here to support and affirm the Mayor's recommendation of the appointment of Dr. Darla Eisenhower and Marianne Stallings to the Community Health Endowment Board. It, of course, is the choice of the mayor and your affirmation as City Council, but I can tell you that both of these individuals will be a welcome contribution. They help us meet our threshold of five people in Health and Human Services to serve on the board, and their experience respectively in senior services and in women's health align with our data-driven decision-making. I would also at this time affirm the reappointment of Dr. Michael Ferris. He has been a hard-working, thoughtful, and committed member of the Endowment Board, and we really appreciate his gifts. So happy to answer any questions from the City Council at this time.
Counsel, any questions at this time, or would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Marianne Stallings, and I have, right now, I am the owner and founder of Bridge to Better Living for the last fifteen years, and before that, I was an educator teacher at the Lincoln Public Schools for twenty-eight years.
I'm Darla Eisenhower. I'm a private practice OB-GYN, and I've been in the Lincoln community for almost eighteen years, and so this will be just another opportunity to help support the health and wellness of the community.
Counsel, any questions at all?
No questions, just want to thank you both for the time and consideration you're giving to the Community Health Endowment. It really means a lot to us to have members of the community being able to volunteer their time and talent to the endowment and to, and so that the endowment can then continue to do good work with our nonprofit partners across the community. So thank you both.
Yes, I'll echo the sentiment too. Thank you for willing to serve. Appreciate it. All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on these items. I'll call Item 1A, Appointing Dr. Darla Eisenhower and Marianne Stallings to the Community Health Endowment for Terms to Expire September 1st of 2028, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Beckettus, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is reappointing Dr. Michael Ferris to the Community Health Endowment Board for a term set to expire September 1st, 2028, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckettus, discussion. Please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1C is approving the Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number 6 for Engineering Services between the City and JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for Lincoln Beale Slough Trail, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1D is approving the Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number 1 between the City and Alfred Benish and Company to provide construction and engineering services for the traffic signal project at Cotner Boulevard and Adams Street, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1E is setting the Board of Equalization hearing date of Monday, November 24th, 2025, at 5:30 PM on the assessments for the Downtown Management BID, Downtown Management Core Overly District, Downtown Maintenance District, and West Haymarket Maintenance District, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Duden, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1F is resolution setting the hearing date of Monday, December 8th, 2025, at 3:00 PM for the assessment of weed abatement costs incurred by the City of Lincoln for the period of November 1st, 2024 through October 31st of 2025, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Duden, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1G is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended August 31st of '25, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second.
Second, Beckettus, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A through 2C were introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Second, by Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Okay. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call Item 4A and 4B together. Item 4A and B is Application of Catering Investments LLC, doing business as Nelnet Cafe for Class C Liquor License, located at 1215 O Street, Unit A, and the Related Manager Application of Brandon Aker.
Welcome.
Hello. Do the address thing.
Yeah, that'd be, name and address.
Brandon Aker, 747, Unit 430, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. Yeah, so Nelnet Cafe. The Nelnet is consolidating all their employees and going to, in the office schedule, and so they put out an RFP, Request for Proposal, for those, on a cafe concept inside. I wasn't going to do it, and then I did it, so. So here we are.
Your wife know?
Yeah. Discussions were had, and it's fine, but there, it's not going to be open to the public at first, so Phase 1 is just going to be for their employees. They'll roughly have about four hundred people in the building each day, and then Phase 2, we'll be adding a sidewalk cafe and then opening to the public, but to start, they keep it in-house, which is fine, but you know, so yeah, that's, that's the skinny. It's identical to what we do at the College of Business now for our cafe. I don't know if you guys get down there ever, but burritos, sandwiches, grab and go salads, but then obviously we're going to do a full bar, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know if there'll be Bloody Marys at eight or at four o'clock, but you know, we'll see what happens.
All right, counsel questions?
Sweet. All right.
Coming down.
Thanks.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on Items 4A and B? Please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call Item 4C and 4D together. Item 4C and D is Application of Hurghard Oil Company, doing business as Super C2 for Class D Liquor License, located at 3202 South 10th Streets, and the Related Manager Application of Joel Larson.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, Jessica Greenwald on behalf of the applicant, 1248 O Street, Suite 890, here in Lincoln. And I don't know if any of you have driven by that location at 10th and High recently? Yeah.
Great.
Thanks, thanks, but yeah, obviously you'd see a lot of really big changes going on there. In 2023, we purchased the abutting property there with the intent of obviously expanding that store, and so finally, this has now come to fruition. So basically, what will happen, we'll work with the commission, and we've already talked to them about this, because it is a bit of a unique situation. So as soon as we are able to open the new building for business, we will work with the commission to make sure that once the liquor license is actually issued, you know, obviously the other one is, is no longer effective, so we'll use that time in there to move all of our inventory, et cetera, over into the new business, our new building rather, and then open up for business, you know, with the correct license in place. But they're very aware of what's going on. We've worked through this with them. Once we move everything into the new building, the old building will eventually be demolished, but as for right now, we're just working on getting everything finished up. Obviously, you have to have certificate of occupancy and all of our inspections done prior to, but yeah, so just happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
All right, counsel, any questions?
No questions, but just want to say thank you for the continued investment in the neighborhood. It means a lot, especially a long-term owner there continuing to expand in their presence. It means a lot, so thank you.
Appreciate it, but owners are right back there, so.
Thank you, ownership group.
All right, other questions? Just finger pointing.
The last row.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Some type of sign language.
Appreciate it, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this application? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
I'll call Item 4E and F together. Item 4E and F is Application of O Street Hotel Associates LLC, doing business as True by Hilton for a Class C Liquor License located at 305 North 50th Street, and the Related Manager Application of Amanda Cadena.
Hi, good afternoon. Amanda Cadena, 3425 South 30th Street, 68502. We are just after the rezoning, thank you, Tom.
Yes, welcome back.
Hi, we can finally get our liquor license. We've been open for a year and a half. Business has been great. We're actually at the top ten percent of our brand, so go us. But yeah, we're all senior hotel staff, ready to finally be able to sell some alcohol to our guests.
Great, great. Counsel, any questions?
No, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on 4E and 4F? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Items 4A through 4F.
Right, second.
Second by Weber, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Step away.
Oh, excuse me. Shoeb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckettus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Should have answered for Bowers.
That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We'll shall move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll call Item 5A. Item 5A is assessing public health nuisance abatement costs associated with the clearing of public nuisances by the Health Department on the following benefited properties, 2400 South 36th Street, 3739 Waldbrayer Lane, 532 South 27th Street, 2354 Garfield Street, 3144 Starr Street, 4816 London Road, 261 East Cherrywood Drive, 6820 Vine Street, 3529 Melrose Avenue, 2809 F Street, 1633 Euclid Ave, 417 North 24th Street, 700 South 27th Street, 510 Adams Street, 2310 South 59th Street, 3603 St. Paul Avenue, 6410 Morale Avenue, 129 West F Street, 3070 Vine Street, 4819 Madison Avenue, and 2229 South 8th Street.
Welcome.
All right, good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Brock Candish. I'm Division Manager, Environmental Public Health at the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, 3131 O Street. I'm here to present assessment costs related to nuisance abatements conducted this year. Annually, we receive and investigate around 1,500 solid waste complaints, which lead to approximately 20 properties requiring abatement. In most cases, we work collaboratively with property owners and the public to resolve these issues promptly. However, the resolution before you pertains to specific properties that despite notice were determined to be public health nuisances and subsequently abated. Our process for abatement involves notifying property owners and occupants based upon available information from the assessor's site or findings from our investigation. Notices outline the alleged nuisance conditions, relevant Lincoln Municipal Code citations, and provide timeframes for addressing the issues before abatement occurs. Certified letters are also sent out before the abatement deadline to ensure compliance and notice. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Counsel, any questions? I don't think we have any at this time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item five B and five C together. Item five B and C is adopting Lincoln Electric System annual budget for two thousand and twenty six to become effective January first of two thousand and twenty six and adopting the Lincoln Electric System rate schedules to become effective January first of two thousand and twenty six.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have some slides here maybe, but I'm not exactly sure how to get to them. A moment. Got it.
Just one second, it's thinking. All right.
See that? Perfect, okay. All right, I'm going to give a brief overview of the LES two thousand and twenty six proposed budget and rates. This will be for your consideration vote on the seventeenth of November. So just as a kind of quick reminder and kind of um, the overarching theme of the way that we prepared the budget and rates for two thousand and twenty six as we have in the past is, you know, um, in line with our longstanding tradition, history of reliable uh, service to the community and a safe, well maintained system um, along with affordability and equity of service. But there are quite a few uh, factors that are influencing uh, our ability to prepare our budget and our rates that are some of which are somewhat outside of our control, including market factors, regulatory and policy requirements, um, you know, cost increases as well. The proposed package that we have for your consideration does support increased net power costs and transmission expenses, which I'm going to touch on in a little bit more detail here. So the budget authorization is seven hundred and thirteen point seven million that we're seeking. That's broke down between our operating or day to day expenditures and our capital budget, which includes the projects that um, will start in two thousand and twenty six and twenty so twenty seven, um, their total project cost. Uh, the projected cash flow on this slide does show um, kind of the cash out the door that we expect to spend in two thousand and twenty six as compared to two thousand and twenty five. You'll see that it is increased over last year um, for two thousand and twenty six. That's primarily related to increased power costs as well as increased infrastructure investment, uh, primarily at Terry Bundy Generating Station. That was uh, consistent with the capital budget amendment that we sought earlier this year when we were before you. To dig in just a little bit more on the operating budget, this is a um, visualization of how that's allocated between various categories within the budget. The operating budget in total is three hundred and twenty eight point eight million. You can see here that power cost and transmission, um, both of those together about fifty eight percent of the budget. Those are costs which are uh, somewhat uh, difficult for us to influence year over year and make up a large portion of our budget. Uh, depreciation is a non cash item, just the depreciation of our assets within our um, uh, facilities. And then the remainder is administrative in general and operations expense expenditures. That includes about seventy million dollars of payroll uh, within that one hundred million for our existing team members. So there's about thirty million dollars left. That's kind of the day to day operations of the utility that's outside of power cost. One thing to note, um, when we went about to prepare the operating budget and the capital budget for two thousand and twenty six is we were very mindful of the fact that we had just implemented a mid year rate increase that was effective July first. Um, we really sought to um, put downward pressure on any needed rate increase that we would have for two thousand and twenty six. Uh, we were striving to have something at two percent or lower. When we uh, got our estimates for power cost in in the middle of July and and towards the end of that month, some of that information comes from our partners that are the operator operators of uh, units that we are partial owners of, uh, minority owners of. We uh, became clear that we were not going to be able to have that rate increase be lower than two percent. So we really only had that thirty million dollars that I mentioned earlier to kind of uh, adjust within the budget. And keeping in mind when we prepared the budget initially, that thirty million dollars worth of costs was essentially brought straight over from two thousand and twenty five with no escalation in it. So um, we were trying to do the same activities in two thousand and twenty six with the same dollars in twenty five, which is difficult alone, um, given inflationary and cost increases. But we were able to achieve about four million dollars worth of reductions in that cost or about twelve percent to drive the rate increase down to three percent. Otherwise, it would have been well over four. Some of the cost reductions um, that we were able to achieve include traveling training. We cut that by about forty percent. Uh, we made reductions in vegetation management to align more with what we think we can probably actually get done with the crews that we're able to assemble to get that work done. We had eight hundred thousand dollars worth of miscellaneous um, uh, outside services and purchases uh, that we cut. We also cut uh, projected increases in headcount. We had originally had a request for twenty six. Um, the interim budget had twelve had been approved. We reduced that down to five. Even with that increase, we are still serving more customers per F T E than most of our peer utilities were very favorable in that metric. Um, so all of that is just to say that we took a really hard look at this budget um, to try and have a rate increase that was um, as low as possible, really just knowing that we had just had a four percent rate increase. That rate increase, just as a reminder, was really for generation additions at the Terry Bundy site, um, more of a long term asset addition. This one that we're proposing now is more for the day to day operations of the utility. So just to touch a little bit on net power cost, um, you'll see here that the easiest way to look at this is kind of the purchases and um, produced power cost net of any wholesale revenue that we uh, can achieve in the Southwest Power Pool market. So the black figures in that chart are the year over year differences. So last year was a hundred and sixteen point one in the two thousand and twenty five budget. Next year is a hundred and forty eight point six or an increase of about thirty two point five million. The highlights of those changes are shown in the table on the left hand side there. We do have a maintenance project at our Roca Bee generating um, site. That's seven point seven million. We also have a um, complimentary capital project along with that that's sixteen point five million. Very important project. It's important that our units are available and ready to run. Um, it is our obligation to bring generation to the market um, for S P P and so we we have to keep our units in good repair. We're also part owner of Laramie River Station in Wyoming and um, they will be taking outage and doing some maintenance work as well. We have additional capacity purchases to serve um, a new market energy customer and we have additional um, maintenance and other energy costs in that sixteen point five million dollars. We do have offsetting retail revenue that will um, cover some of these increased net power costs that you'll see on a subsequent slide as well. As far as other operating expenses outside of power cost, um, operations and maintenance are up about five million or twelve percent. Transmission costs are up three point four million. Um, I'm going to show you in just a minute what the future kind of of transmission cost looks like because it's important to our proposed rate increase. We also have payroll and benefits increases, which includes uh, headcount as well as healthcare increases, a cost of living adjustment and and some small uh, merit adjustments as well for our staff, along with some of those reductions that I talked about as well. Uh, the administrative in general is up just two point three million or three percent. We have no changes to our sustainable energy program funding for energy conservation type projects, uh, so that is the same as two thousand and twenty five. And then our energy assistance program budget, which provides assistance to those who are least able to pay their bills and is administered by the community action program is increasing to four hundred and twenty seven thousand. That's um, outlined in LES board resolution and as customer counts increase and rate increases happen, that number will increase. For our capital budget, the authorization uh, request is three hundred and eighty four point nine million with spending of one hundred and twenty six of that in two thousand and twenty six. The largest project is that Terry Bundy Generating Station addition at one hundred and eighty million over several years there. This chart is just um, to show the cash flow of that three hundred and eighty four point nine million over time. It's not intended to show that in two thousand and thirty, for instance, will only have fifteen point eight million of capital that that will fill in as time goes on. This is just those projects that are included in the two thousand and twenty six authorization. Um, other large projects include substation transformer projects, um, overhead and underground projects, a downtown network rebuild and that Roca Bee unit uh, maintenance project that I mentioned earlier. So that brings us to the rate increase recommendation, which is three percent. Um, that brings in about nine point seven five million and the residential rate increase is also three percent. As I mentioned earlier, that will support net power cost increases as well as transmission increases. This chart shows um, on the right hand side there, you can get kind of the order of magnitude of the different classes and what they bring in each for uh, the amount of revenue. In the middle there, it shows the rate increases for each class as we try to achieve cost of service, um, either plus or minus five percent for each of those classes. A few outliers include the heating service rate. That's at ten percent. The that class has been using energy differently over the last few years, which requires uh, larger rate increases. We've been communicating with that class. Uh, this is not a surprise to any of them and uh, that class is close to new customers and will be discontinued by two thousand and thirty. The street lighting class um, has been on a trajectory of larger rate increases for some time here. We've been in communication with the city um, and probably in the next couple of years, those will taper off and when they achieve cost of service too. Just a few highlights of kind of comparatives for LES rates. Um, the chart there shows how LES rates compare with inflation since nineteen ninety. We continue to lag inflation, uh, meaning that we feel like we're doing more with less and continue to seek ways to do that. Uh, on the right or the left hand side there, those are some statistics from our latest competitive market study. Uh, we ranked tenth out of eighty seven comparable cities for residential affordability, uh, sixteenth for the residential bill as a percent of household income. That really is a good measure of affordability. It also demonstrates to the rating agencies, which are really important to us, um, as they rate our debt and provide us the opportunity to uh, issue bonds at low interest rates. But um, kind of the ability for LES to achieve rate increases when we need to. Um, and we are at one point four nine percent of the residential bill as a percent of house median household income and the average for public power is about two percent. So we're well below that. Um, we're fourth out of eighty seven cities for price stability, which is also important for business customers. This is um, all in price. Uh, we forecasted through two thousand and twenty six. We have data for um, twenty twenty through two thousand and twenty four from the Energy Information Administration. Uh, LES is in orange, Nebraska is in red, and the nation's in blue, just demonstrating that we continue to be um, quite favorable, particularly as it relates to the rest of the nation. With that rate increase, we expect retail revenue to be increased by fifty eight point nine million or eighteen percent. We do have some load growth from our native load in addition to a large customer that is entering our commercial class. You can see that um, in the energy growth in the bottom chart there, which is anticipated in total to be up about twelve percent. Financial metrics, um, these are very important to us as we set the budget, just to make sure that we're meeting our minimum targets. Um, again, trying to keep our double A bond rating because we are very um, infrastructure intensive and we do issue um, quite a bit of debt. Uh, fixed charge coverage is kind of the primary one. We want to be above one forty. This budget achieves that. Days cash on hand, we want to be above eighty five in this case. You'll see that it ticks quite a bit upward. We are planning to issue bonds in the early part of next year to pay for the Terry Bundy Generating Station additions as well as replenish our uh, liquidity levels. And our debt to capitalization, net debt ratios, a couple others that we look at, higher is better in these, um, excuse me, lower is better. They're starting to tick up just a little bit, but um, these are still very favorable. Okay, shifting gears just a little bit to a few, just a few more slides, a future outlook of LES rates. We always do financial modeling, but we've uh, started to share this as we've uh, kind of done our budget roadshow uh, to show this to customers. This includes um, projects that we've initially kind of preliminarily identified through our strategic planning effort, kind of subject to change because we're pretty early in that process. Terry Bundy Generating Station additions, the Southwest Power Pool's integrated transmission plan, what we know about that thus far and growth from our market energy customer, those are kind of the highlights. Um, but I'm going to show you the timeframe that we usually show to the rating agencies um, to give you the end of this story here is kind of what it does for rates. So our annual capital expenditures over the next few years, kind of what we need to keep the utility just running steady state is between seventy and eighty million. So you can see that we're quite a bit above that, um, primarily because of the generation additions that we have, as well as a large software system upgrade or replacement and then um, some substation projects. But the most important thing of this whole entire presentation that I want to share is in the bottom chart. So on the top, those capital expenditures, you could think of those kind of like um, like a house, a mortgage. You can, you can borrow for that and you can spread those costs over time. The costs in the bottom chart are transmission expenses, which are operating for us and they have to be paid for every year by customers. So I mentioned earlier that the two thousand and twenty six costs are up three point four million over the two thousand and twenty five transmission expenses. Southwest Power Pool, which we're a member of and we have good representation, um, then Southwest Power Pool uh, has adopted a two thousand and twenty four transmission plan as well as they're under consideration of a two thousand and twenty five one. When we put this together, we incorporated what we knew at the time. Um, what we do know now for the two thousand and twenty five plan is we probably didn't include enough dollars. It's probably something quite a bit higher. But what we see in the future is increasing costs primarily in response to winter storm Yuri and resiliency of the transmission system, as well as increasing load in the system um, from demand or excuse me, data centers and and additional demand. So um, the if you move from like twenty five to two thousand and twenty nine, or even if you look beyond, it goes up to fifty five million or greater, that could be, you know, like a fifteen percent rate increase in one year for customers if we were to do it all in one year. So that's part of the thinking as we propose our rate increases for the next few years and show an outlook, is that isn't something that we want to do for customers because that would be difficult to deal with. Uh, debt service, that's an important number to us. Uh, currently we're at about fifty five million a year. This is a number that we have to kind of cover with revenues, um, a metric that the rating agencies look at, so that's going to be increasing. Our debt outstanding is also going to be increasing to levels that we haven't had. Um, it's okay, we're able to do that. We've built in a lot of capacity over the last few years of just paying down debt while we could, while we weren't having a lot of capital and stru- uh, infrastructure investments. Um, we see our demand increasing, meaning additional load and um, energy use. And one thing to highlight here too is this modeling just kind of assumes kind of um, minimum targets for our financial metrics. This is the primary metric that drives our financial modeling, but this is the culmination of all of this modeling, kind of get to the chase, Emily. But um, so the the rate increases that are projected through this model um, are in the three to three and a half percent uh, range. So the takeaway here is if we have a disciplined approach to dealing with these projected increased costs, it is something that's manageable. Now, you know, nobody appreciates or likes rate increases, but it's easier to deal with a three percent than a fifteen percent all in one year. So um, the bottom chart there just shows the cumulative rate impact of those rate increases that are in the top chart. But um, what we've been sharing through the community is this rate outlook. A lot can change. Um, it did for us in July when we became aware of increased costs that we weren't expecting in power costs. But if we were to kind of provide an outlook for future rates, this is what we would provide, is what we would provide, this is what we've provided to customers, kind of in the 3 to 5% range, in the lower end of that range for the next few years. But it's very important that we work a plan and are disciplined about it, or those just stack on top of each other because we are sure that those transmission expenses are coming our way. Few other things that are included in the red line rate schedules, expanding the solar standby rider to the general service demand rate. Class, that was a new offering last year, we're just expanding that. As we got closer to serving our market energy customer, we got smarter about it, so we needed to include some clarifying language and removing one type of service from that. And then we're closing the large power customer rate class to new customers. It only had five customers on it. They've all been moved off of it because it's financially better for them to be on a different class, but just highlighting that here. We've done a lot of outreach over the last month and a half or so, trying to get the message out, trying to talk to anybody who would like to hear from us. It's been pretty much neutral to positive. I think people appreciate having the rate outlook, especially business customers. That's been well received, but otherwise pretty quiet. So we did receive unanimous, we had eight of our nine board members there for the LES Board, but we got unanimous approval to move this along to you as well. So there's two resolutions for your consideration. There's the budget one of the 713.7 million and then the rates resolution has all of the changes that I just described as well. So happy to take any questions.
Counsel, what questions do we have? Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you Chair Carlson, thank you so much for coming down. So I want to go back to the transmission expenses, right? So there's essentially a $30 million increase in a three-year period from 2026 to 2029. And that is the result of the plan that is being, the transmission plan being approved through the Southwest Power Pool in response to winter storms and increased load, right? So when we're talking about transmission expenses, what, what is that to an average LES customer, right? You know, I don't think of it through the extent of a transmission expense. So what, what is that really like for the average LES customer?
Yep. So just to provide just a little bit more clarity, so there's two plans, the 2024 one that SVP has adopted. We don't yet know exactly how that will cash flow to us. We know our portion, but the timing of it, so we did our best to estimate it so that jump in 30 million is an estimate, just so that we're, I want to be transparent about that. The 2025 plan is under consideration, hasn't been adopted yet, but we have preliminary estimates of that as well. So this is an estimate, but it's going to happen. But transmission expense is basically the moving of power. So it's not the generation of it, but it's the getting it here part. These infrastructure investments are all through the entire SVP footprint. It benefits all of us in the footprint to have a hardened system and a resilient system because we all rely on, you know, that's the beauty of SVP is being part of a large footprint, you know, grid system too. So utilities will receive a notice to construct a transmission project, they will have to pay for it, but when they, when it goes into service, then we start paying our portion of that because we all benefit from that. So we all share in the cost. SVP is nonprofit, so it's, there's no profit being made. We're just sharing the cost of building out the transmission system as determined by lots of studies that have been done for the appropriate build out of that system to deal with the new demands being placed on it and resiliency as a result of studies from winter storm Yuri. Does that help?
No, it does. And so essentially the benefit of those transmission expenses is the reliability that LES customers will receive as being part of a larger footprint through the Southwest Power Pool.
Yep, reliability and resiliency.
Perfect. And that, and that's because of what we have seen when there are these catastrophic winter storms, when we've seen increase in demands, whether that is through certain industries like data centers, right?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All of the demand increases, yep. Electrification, you know, I hate to just spend it all on data centers, all types of...
Absolutely, one example, yep. And so then with that, that 30 million estimated increase in transmission expenses, the idea is if it's 3% today, it's not going to then be 6% two years from now or three years from now. If we're increasing the rate consistently but steadily, then there won't be this sharp uptick when the transmission expenses increase. Is that correct?
Right. They're going to likely increase gradually over time. That's our estimate. There may be some sharp one-time step-ups that, like you see in that chart. But yes, the idea is that as you build a little bit into the rate base, you reduce the rate shock, you have better price stability, predictability for customers too. And it isn't as though, well, that, all of that money goes to the benefit of the utility. It helps customers, you know, yes, that is what we're doing.
And that's helpful. And then just going back to the comparison to inflation, that typically LES has lagged the inflation when it comes to rate increases. Does that account for the most recent budget adjustment that included the 4.3%, was it? For the Terry Bundy generating station?
4%, yep.
4% on top of a 3.3. And so that accounts for that too. Even with that one-time rate increase, LES continues to lag inflation, which is why ratepayers maybe see a more affordable rate than other cities.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, perfect. And then my last, or yes, my last question is, you touched briefly on the Energy Assistance Program and how there's going to be an increase in that budget. Can you describe briefly what the eligibility is for a customer to be able to participate in that Energy Assistance Program?
I'm not able to because we intentionally have the Community Action Program administer that because we want to be separated from that and we think they're better qualified to do that. So I wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay, yep.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Counsel, what are the questions? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Anyone from the public, welcome.
Well, I was hoping I wouldn't be the only one.
No.
Hello. Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Ken Winston, I'm appearing on behalf of the Nebraska Sierra Club. I guess I wanted to, my testimony is going to be sort of nuanced, strongly supporting the Lincoln Electric System, but neutral on the rate increase. Supporting the Lincoln Electric System because we believe they do a great job. They, I don't know if they provided a chart with their comparable rates, but their rates are better than, than most of the, of the comparable utilities in the area. Some of the lowest rates in the region and, well, some of the lowest rates in the country. And also some of the best reliability and, and also believe that they, they've demonstrated visionary planning in the way that they, they've operated. We appreciate the strategic planning process they went through this last year and think they came up with a good strategic plan. We greatly appreciate the fact that they've continued to state their commitment to a 2040 net zero decarbonization goal. And also, as Ms. Koenig indicated, appreciate the fact that they had good public outreach about their, about their budget rates process. Really commend them for the way they do that. But as I said, we're going to be neutral on the rate increase just because, well, we're not going to, we're not excited about rate increases in any, because they have negative impacts on some members of our community. We do support increased funding for the Energy Assistance Program. We appreciate the fact that they're increasing the funding for that, although we think that may be, there may be additional funds that are needed for that program going forward, given the fact that the federal government is, is attempting to gut the Y heat program. And they're also, well, as you're, I'm sure all well aware, there's funding, funding's being questioned for SNAP, for healthcare. So there may be needs for additional funding in that area. Also appreciate the fact that the Sustainable Energy Program is proposed to stay the same for, for 2026, but we also believe that, that it would be appropriate to expand the funding for the Sustainable Energy Program because we believe that, that it's going to be vital to help people reduce their energy usage. As was indicated, the demand for electricity is increasing. And so the more that we can decrease the demand by current customers, the more we can help meet the demand going forward. And then just finally, I guess I, I wanted to mention that need to let the council know that, that, well, we were here in, in June when there was the rate increase to buy the new gas generation turbines. But we need to let you know, need to let you know that, that there will be strong opposition if there is an attempt to, to invest in additional fossil fuel generation. Just because there's, there's a number of organizations and individuals that are committed to that position. We believe that more renewable generation, more investment in wind, solar, battery storage and, and energy efficiency are the way to go. And so if there is more, if there are more efforts in that direction, well, I just kind of letting you know that that will be our position and be prepared to, well, if that happens, there will be more than just Ken Winston here to speak to you. So probably a lot more folks than that. So in any event, appreciate the good work that, that our, that the Lincoln Electric System provides and the good value they provide our community and would be glad to respond to questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this? Item 5B, C and D. If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call item 5D, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25002, application of Matadoll LLC to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to change approximately 113 acres from Tier One Priority C to Tier One Priority B on the Priority Growth Area Map to move approximately 42 acres into the future service limit and change from Tier Two to Tier One Priority B on the Priority Growth Area Map and change the same 42 acres from agriculture to urban residential on the future land use map on property territory located at the northeast corner of South 98th and Pine Lake Road.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Calkowski, appearing today on behalf of Matadoll LLC. Just for your reference, Matadoll's been the developer of the Wandering Creek Development north of Van Doren Street and west of 98th Street. So Matadoll has a contract interest to purchase the property located, it's about 155 acres located northeast of 98th and Pine Lake Road. Okay, so I've got the shown on my map here. This property is very attractive for development for several reasons. It's one very rare piece in East Lincoln that hasn't been split up by acreages, right? So we have 155 acres intact. We have adjacent paved street with South 98th Street and Pine Lake Road. We have water connections available to the site. And obviously because of its location, we have a school right across the street, retail services and a lot of other city services in very close proximity to this property. So the only service that we're lacking is access to an adjacent gravity sanitary sewer system, which can be provided through a temporary lift station and force main to serve this property. The development team from Matadoll has provided information to the city to show that there is capacity in the existing sanitary sewer system to serve this property without impacting the ability to serve other Tier One areas in this area of the city. So we have requested a comprehensive plan amendment relating to the property, actually multiple amendments, but both to the growth tier map and then also to the land use maps in our 2050 Comprehensive Plan. So first, we're requesting to move the entire property into Tier One Priority B. You can see on the map that currently most of the property is already in Tier One Priority C, a small corner was in Tier Two. So we'd be moving that entire 155 acres into staying in Tier One, but moving it up to Priority B. And then with respect to the land use map, we'd just be changing that small triangular corner also to show it as residential urban density so that the entire property is shown for residential urban density development. The staff report and planning commission by a seven to zero vote found that the Tier One Priority B designation was appropriate as the site could be developed within the first half of that comp plan, planning period, so a Priority B designation would be appropriate. And they also found that the future land use map changes are consistent with the expected and desired uses in this area. You'll see we have the acreage uses to the east and then ag uses to the south. Matadoll acknowledges that the comp plan amendments are conditional upon city council approving some of these ordinance amendments that you have coming up here later this afternoon dealing with the lift station. We've been working with the city for several months on amending that old 2004 policy and they've come forward with a proposal to amend the actual subdivision and zoning ordinances to incorporate a little different standards for utilizing lift stations that would make it available to, for utilization for this site. So as I indicated, we've done the studies, I think, to show that if we get the zoning ordinances amended, that this would be an appropriate site to utilize a lift station and take advantage of some of the capacity that we have in our existing system to get some additional residential lots out there and on the market. I'm happy to answer any questions. This item will be held over for vote, even though it's a resolution, until next week when you're going to be voting on the ordinance amendments. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We can have vote on these items. I'll call item 5A, assessing public health nuisance abatement costs associated with the clearing of the public nuisances by the Health Department on the following benefited properties. 2400 South 36th Street, 3739 Wildfire Lane, 532 South 27th Street, 2354 Garfield Street, 3144 Starr Street, 4816 London Road, 261 East Cherrywood Drive, 6820 Vine Street, 3529 Melrose Ave, 2809 F Street, 1633 Euclid Avenue, 417 North 24th Street, 700 South 27th Street, 510 Adams Street, 2310 South 59th Street, 3603 St. Paul Ave, 6410 Morale Avenue, 129 West F Street, 3070 Vine Street, 4819 Madison Ave, 2229 South 8th Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob.
Yes.
Dudin.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5B is adopting Lincoln Electric System Annual Budget for 2026 to become effective January 1st of 2026, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Weber.
And I've got a motion here that to defer this to action until November 17th, 2025 for vote.
I'd second that motion.
Second by Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Dudin.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5C is adopting Lincoln Electric System Rate Schedules to become effective January 1st of 2026, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion.
And again, I've got the same motion to defer action on that to the November 17th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second the motion to delay.
Second by Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Dudin.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5D is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25002, application of Matadoll LLC to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to change approximately 113 acres from Tier One Priority C to Tier One Priority B on the Priority Growth Area Maps to move approximately 42 acres into the future service limit and change from Tier Two to Tier One Priority B on the Priority Growth Area Maps and change the same 42 acres from agriculture to urban residential on the future land use map on property territory located at the northeast corner of South 98th and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Weber, discussion.
And again, I'm going to request that we defer action on this until November 17th, 2025.
Second.
Second by Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob.
Yes.
Dudin.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes section five of our agenda. We shall move on to section six. I'll call item 6A. Item 6A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefix by the letter A by creating the Classification Technology Project Coordinator.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Barb McIntyre, Human Resources Director, 555 South 10th. This will be creating a new classification for information services. This positional report to the technology... This position will report to the Technology Project Manager. The position will be in charge of planning, coordinating, and monitoring of information technology projects across the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County. So they do have some vacancies in IS. Once we get this created, they will use some of those vacancies to post this and hire it to be filled, but it would be a new class for us. The pay range that they're requesting for this is an A14, $76,101,000, so.
Right. Counsel, any questions? Appreciate it, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 6B, amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification is assigned to the pay range, which is prefix by the letter W, by changing the pay range for Class 2026 Broadband Conduit System Manager from W04 to W02.
Yeah, so what's going on here, which is a little bit different than usually what I talked to you about, is the class has recently been revised to narrow the scope of work and focus on the broadband conduit system. So we are adjusting the pay range accordingly because we're taking some of the work away and narrowing down what this job will be focusing on. So we do believe that with the more limited role of this position, the new classification range of W2 is appropriate. Questions on that one? And it is also vacant. Once we get the new pay range or pay class, grade, pay grade assigned to this, we'll be posting it also to fill it.
Counsel, any questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 6C, amending Title IX of the Lincoln Invispa Code relating to Public Peace and Welfare to create a new chapter, 9.70, entitled Cryptocurrency, to provide guidelines for cryptocurrency ATMs and penalties for violating the same.
Welcome.
Thank you, counsel. Good afternoon, Chair Carlson and members of the Lincoln City Council. Radley Slezak, Mayor's Office, 555 South 10th Street. Here today to introduce a proposed ordinance that would require businesses who provide access to cryptocurrency ATMs to post a written sign that will be provided by the Lincoln Police Department to warn potential users of these machines of the risks of fraud or scams that go along with using them. With me today will be Lincoln Police Chief, Michonne Morrow, and Director of Aging Partners, Randy Jones, to help share the city's perspective on this issue on behalf of both of their departments. And I know that there are some folks from AARP and others from the community as well to, to come speak on this issue. So I just want to start with a quick summary of the kind of problem that we're trying to remedy with this ordinance. There's actually an example of this in the, in the local media here in the last couple of weeks. So picture that you get a call from someone saying they're local law enforcement, they spoof the number, they give you, you know, proper identification, all that stuff, and they tell you that you've missed jury duty and you have a warrant out for your arrest. They then tell you, you need to pay a certain amount of money to take care of this issue and avoid being arrested. The scammer then instructs you to go take that amount of money out of your bank account and insert it into one of these ATMs, convert it to crypto, and send it off to them. This is a problem that, that we're seeing here locally and that is seen on the national level. These statistics are from the FBI on a national level. I know Chief Morrow will have local examples too. But adults 60 and older accounted for 67% of these crypto ATM fraud cases in 2024. And that same age group also accounted for 86% of the monetary losses from those scams. So it's clear that seniors are being targeted by these scams and that one of the tools scammers are using are these crypto ATMs. We want to make sure that these machines are being used in a thoughtful and safe way. This is in no, by no means a representation on this industry or these particular machines in and of themselves, but simply a recognition that they are tools being used to scam residents in our community, especially vulnerable residents like our seniors. Lincoln is one of two age-friendly communities achieving the AARP designation of being an age-friendly community. We're one of two in the state. And as an age-friendly community, the city of Lincoln considers how we can best serve our older adult residents in the work that we do each day. And that's why we're taking action to protect senior residents and all residents by introducing, by increasing the community's awareness of crypto ATM scams through this ordinance. Again, the ordinance, the specifics of the ordinance, it would require businesses that host these machines to post a warning sign that will be printed and providing, provided by the Lincoln Police Department. And the sign will warn potential users of the risks associated, or warn users of the ATM they may be the target of a scam, and then direct them to call local law enforcement if they believe that is the case. Businesses who don't comply are subject to a $500 fine. We've worked with AARP on this ordinance, and they plan to partner with LPD to educate businesses who host these machines about the ordinance and ensure maximum compliance from those businesses. Also of note, on the education campaign, we're asking for the ordinance to take effect 60 days after your vote to allow time for these education efforts and to generate buy-in from, from the business community who has these machines at their establishments. We would not be the first city in the state to do this. I think this is important context. Omaha passed this very same ordinance in 2024. And then also another piece of context is that this is going to be complementary to a state law that was passed last legislative session. That state law required certain disclosures on these machines for users to click through and acknowledge before they are able to use them. It put in daily transaction limits, mandatory refunds for victims of scams, and that also requires these machines to be licensed with the state. So going forward, this licensure process is how we'll be able to know where these machines are at and then interact with business owners to help make sure they're aware of the ordinance and, and provide them with a sign. That licensing list is not available yet through the state because that, that is a new law, but as of now, we believe there are roughly 40 crypto ATM machines in the Lincoln area. And with that, I would ask Chief Morrow to come up and provide some local stats on this issue here in Lincoln.
Welcome.
Thank you. Randy Jones, Director of Aging Partners, Department of Aging for the city of Lincoln. Today, I want to express a real concern that I have for the growing threat that's affecting older adults here in Lincoln and across Nebraska, and that's scams involving cryptocurrency. These scams often appear as investment opportunities, tech support calls, or even romantic connections. Scammers are high-pressure, use high-pressure tactics, promising quick returns or pretending to be representatives of government or utility companies. The previous scams of these bad actors used to be limited to gift cards, but now is including cryptocurrency as that's become more popular. It's not the gift card company or the cryptocurrency company that is scheming, but they are being used as tools. We've heard heartbreaking stories of retirees losing their savings or falling victim to what appears to be legitimate online offers at first. And what's most concerning is how sophisticated and convincing these scams have become, especially with an audience that often gets confused with the new technology. Aging Partners is urging everyone, especially older adults and families, to pause before you pay and talk before you transfer. Scammers typically put pressure on their victims by phone, then incite them to act quickly and immediately, social media or text, and often threaten them with action. If this happens, then the seniors should know that it's a scam. If someone asks the senior to send money through Bitcoin or gift cards, it's likely a scam. No legitimate agency, business or government office, will ever request payment in this manner. We endorse this step to better educate the public so that they can make safe decisions on their own. Our mission is to help older adults stay informed, independent, and safe. By talking about these issues openly, we can protect our neighbors and preserve the financial security so many have worked a lifetime to build. Thank you.
Welcome, Chief.
Thanks for having me. Good afternoon, Michonne Morrow, 575 South 10th, Lincoln, Nebraska. I have the privilege of serving as the Lincoln Police Chief. My colleagues have already done an excellent job bringing up the wins that we think that we will have with this cryptocurrency ordinance. So I just want to provide a little bit more information specifically to some of the data in terms of Lincoln, Nebraska. We started with our LPD Crime Analysis Unit tracking fraud cases involving cryptocurrency in 2021. And since the beginning of that year, up until just a couple of weeks ago, I didn't check these numbers again since we did our news conference. But the total that we had seen in our community was 426 cases, which is a pretty significant number. And again, I would do want to be clear that this includes all types of cryptocurrency scams and not just those involving the crypto ATMs. So a little bit on the demographics for us, the average age of victims in these cases is 56 years old, and 42%, 42% of victims are 65 and older. Altogether of these cases that we have in our community, the total loss is an incredibly alarming number of 11.1 million. Loss, again, just in our community. So we already talked about what the ordinance will require, which is simply just some posting at the ATMs that would hopefully give a community member pause. And so I just want to hit on that a little bit more, that these cryptocurrency scams are increasingly used to target older adults who are vulnerable in our community. They're often coerced under great emotional stress. And what we are hoping is that when they go to these ATMs, when they're feeling emotional, possibly overwhelmed, under pressure, confused, that the on-machine signage will be that final safeguard that will give them that pause to potentially reflect and hopefully walk away and prevent victimization. We really do see this as an additional layer that will complement the state statute and another layer in our view of community engagement, because to be able to stop this type of victimization, it will take a community effort. And so this is simply a piece of education that we see for law enforcement, our partners in city government, and businesses. It is not to over-regulate. It is not to create a stigma for these businesses. It is simply to ensure that no one in our community is taking advantage of the wins that they may have from victimization through the services they provide. So again, just the signage and posting for awareness and hopefully to give that pause for that individual who may be a victim of a scam at that point in time. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Carlson and members of the council. My name is Gina Ragland. I reside at 1660 La Plata Court here in Lincoln. I'm a District Four constituent, Mr. Weber, as well as on behalf, I'm here on behalf of AARP Nebraska, 301 South 13th Street, Suite 201. AARP has long worked to educate consumers, support fraud victims, and improve fraud detection and prevention across industries, as well as continuing to work towards policy solutions to prevent fraud and protect fraud victims. AARP stands for today and supports the proposed ordinance 25107 being proposed before you today. The impact of fraud on victims and their families is wide-reaching and can be financially and emotionally devastating, especially for older adults. Criminals are becoming more sophisticated in their approach, thereby making it harder for individuals to detect fraud, creating a much greater challenge for law enforcement and policymakers who are trying to stay ahead of the new scams. The FBI's 2024 IC3 Annual Report revealed that in 2024, individuals over the age of 60 reported losses exceeding $4.8 billion, marking an almost 43% increase from 2023. Older adults are disproportionately affected by fraud and scams using cryptocurrency ATMs. In 2024, that FBI IC3 report received over 10,956 complaints involving crypto kiosks, and Americans reported over $246.7 million in stolen funds. This represents a 99% increase in the number of complaints and a 31% increase in reported victim losses from 2023. You've heard what the crypto ATMs are, you know, specifically in basic form, they are a simple way for individuals to convert fiat currency, which is general government currency like dollars, euros, and pounds, and they convert that into cryptocurrency. These machines are unstaffed machines that look like a traditional ATM. I think the differentiation is important to know that you're not taking your own money out, you're actually putting money into these machines. And so there is a big difference in that. A person, instead of distributing cash, they accept the cash in exchange for cryptocurrency, and a person walks up to a standalone kiosk to purchase that by inserting cash and completing a few steps. As you've heard many of the examples, the scams haven't changed, it's just now the tactics are changing, and one of these examples is the cryptos. The reason they're attractive, again, is a criminal, they enhance the emotional state of someone. We've had lots of reports, and you'll see in the back of the, the documents that I provided to you, a lot of examples of how this works. Again, the scams haven't changed, but the tactics are. Once they get a victim to a heightened state of emotion, they stop thinking logically, they're scared, again, they're, they're worried. A lot of times, again, there's a lot of threats that go along with this. Today, there are close to 40,000 crypto ATMs nationwide and over 200 in the state, and roughly, we know about 40 in Nebraska, or excuse me, in Lincoln. As Riley mentioned, in early 2025, Nebraska Legislature did pass the Bipartisan Control of Electronic Record Fraud Prevention Act, which we call LB609. The new law gives the Department of Banking and Finance, along with law enforcement officials, new tools to fight theft committed through the cryptocurrency kiosks, as well as implement vital consumer protections. Some of those specifically, they were not licensed before, and they now have to have licensure under the Money Transmitters Act with the Department of Banking. They have to register the location of each crypto, limit the transactions for people that are new. Again, these people that are oftentimes scammed, there's no more than a $2,000 amount that can go into that machine every day. New customers, we were able to define them as 14 days or 14, under a 14-day time period that had more protections to protect people who had realized they were in a scam situation. They are required to provide specific disclosures and warnings, as well as transaction receipts. And those transaction receipts are really important because that blockchain, they can, they can track where that money is going on the blockchain, even though it's a virtual wallet. Also included in that was a cap on fees. It's still too much, but it's capped at 18%. You do the math on a $100 bill, 18% is a lot of money that people would be charged on top of what, for that transaction fee. And then probably the, one of the most important things that we advocated for was to issue refunds to people. Again, in those 14-day periods, if you're a new customer and you report it within 30 days, you can get your money back because you didn't realize what, what had happened. The passage of Ordinance 25107, we've talked about that very basically here. This is an additional layer. It's a layer of protection. It makes the retailer more responsible. It's not just the industry. Again, by putting that, that signage up and having that accountability, we feel that it's another way that we can intervene to help people stop and think and pause before they actually do and make that transaction. With that, I'm out of time. You have the rest of my testimony, but I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Counselman Weber.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Carlson. And Gina, thank you so much for coming down and for all of the work you do of helping make Lincoln an age-friendly city. I, I see it here in your remarks, but can you just touch briefly on the implementation and education that AARP is committed to assisting the city of Lincoln when it comes to passing this ordinance?
Sure, and I appreciate the extra time there.
Absolutely.
Riley did mention, and we have had several meetings, we're planning actually to meet again this week with LPD, the Mayor's Office, with the city. We are fully vested in doing this. You will hear from a volunteer that's coming up that we, what some of the work that we did in Omaha through that city council with the implementation of that ordinance. And again, I don't, it's Omaha, so they'll do things how they do, but here in Lincoln, but it's a similar situation. We're fully on board and committed because we want to stop this. But, you know, education is a big part of the work that we do with our membership through our Fraud Watch Network, but we're fully vested and very appreciative of Chief Morrow being willing to have those investigators go with our volunteers to those places and provide that education. And I want to make it very clear, we're not here to be the bad guy and try to hurt retail. We're just asking if you see, it's, again, when if you see something, say something. And so by having those signs up there, I think this is really another important way that we can engage our retailers to help in stopping some of this from happening.
Absolutely. Thank you again for coming down, really appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Counselman.
I just had a quick question, and I don't know if it's for you or for Riley or for the chief. Can you help me understand kind of the differences between like the state requirement of providing specific disclosures and warnings and then this?
Yeah, and I think that's a fair and good question, and probably, you've probably been approached about that. And again, this is not to, I guess, the signage that was required in the state legislation, LB609, was actually left very open. If you look at the LB609, and we wanted more specific, but... If you look at the LB609, and we wanted more specific, but again, as we compromise to make laws and that sort of thing happen, there are suggestions what could be required or said in there. Again, mostly what we're trying to say again is stop and pause. This should not be used as cash or to pay a bill or to, for government utility bills, that sort of thing. So there's a lot inside of that bill that are suggestions of what could be on there. But basically, it's a warning for people, again, that to remind them, this is not an ATM where, like the bank, where you go and you take out your own money. It also should not be used to pay bills, to pay the DMV, send money to people that you don't know, those sorts of things. So the language inside of 609 is actually very vague as far as what's required on there. But I also will say, what's within this ordinance 25107, I go back to my point about the local enforcement piece, because you as a city council and you at the city can now say, and for me as a consumer, if I'm in one of those situations and I walk into a Lincoln business that's dealing with this, it's actually that local contact. So Chief Morrow and her group then would be able to be on that notice, which would still be in compliance with what's required by the state law. So a number to call law enforcement, a number to contact whoever owns the kiosk, that's kind of a long answer to your question, but it's, this would not take anything away from what's in the state legislation. It would complement it. Actually, in my opinion, makes it better, because it's local.
Thank you.
Counselman.
Becky. Thank you for coming forward. And again, don't know if it's a question for you or for Riley, but because you have a context across the United States in terms of this specific work, as Councilman Weber notated, the question I have is that the Lincoln ordinance considers the potentiality of holding a business that hosts an ATM liable? Can you discuss that a little bit in terms of, is that common across the United States? Is it uncommon? You know, for example, we, a landlord wouldn't necessarily be held liable if their tenant didn't follow liquor laws, for example. Can you walk us through that?
Sure, Councilmember Becky. And I think that's a great question, and also another fair question. And the way that I would respond to that is, you know, there are agreements, these aren't just being placed in there, and there's no responsibility of the business owner in the sense that the industry is going and putting those inside of the locations, and the retailer is getting some kind of stipend back, you could say. There has been reports of anywhere from $100 to $700 a month across the country. I can't tell you specifically for Nebraska. But we also know, they also sometimes are benefiting with a percentage of whatever the transactions are coming out of that machine. So for me, when, if, personally, my opinion of that is if you're going to place it in the building, you need to really understand what the machine is doing, especially if you're getting money back, you know, every month to have it there, and also a kickback on whatever is that, you know, whatever's being coming out for the withdrawals in the percentage. So it's a matter of, we're not saying you have to police the machine. All we're asking is you put that warning sign up there to help stop. And again, you'll see in my testimony, it takes a village to make this work. And so we feel like it's another piece of that puzzle that would help in stopping somebody from becoming a victim of fraud.
Is the construct of how these machines are placed not necessarily a base rent on a monthly basis or an annual basis, but rather a cut of the ATM's usage?
I honestly could not really give you an exact answer on that, other than what I've just told you about. We know in general, there is a fee that's paid to whoever puts it inside the, allows it in the building. And sometimes, there's also that percentage that's cut back on whatever the percentage of the withdrawals are. So I honestly can't answer that, Councilmember. I don't have that information.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, counsel?
I've got a question for the chief of police. I've got a question for you, and for the law department, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Chief, if we had $11 million worth of robberies, wouldn't that be a crisis?
Yes. That would be a significant crisis, where we would be convening resources and details and ensuring that we had operability and eyes on the problem, so we could address it and provide relief to our community.
And my next question is for city law.
Yonti Christie, city attorney.
My question is, is, is there any way we can speed this up, instead of waiting 60 days to enact it?
I think the answer is yes. Short answer is yes. This ordinance is in front of the council. Council, I think, is set to vote not next week, because they're, so, the 17th. Council member can make an amendment at any time to change the effective date.
All right. Yeah. I'll do that. I'll work with you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make one more point to your comments? So what I didn't add into my comments today, but I think now is a good time to do so, is we have had eyes on this and have recognized this as an issue. So educating through media, our social media, as well as we created a new position within our Technical Investigations Unit, very specifically to address cryptocurrency frauds as they continue to increase in our community. And the technical skills to be able to investigate this is an investment in training resources and dollars, but we believed that it was paramount for us to move forward with this position now. Starts in January.
That's why I think it's more important to enact this now, not wait till after Christmas.
Sure, and I appreciate that. Want to share also is, to the point of some of the comments that have been made, is we really did see this as an opportunity for community engagement and getting into these businesses, having a conversation with them, sharing with them our concerns and the urgency and the why of putting up the signage, and that, again, it wasn't to stigmatize their business or the cryptocurrency ATMs. It was to create a community around the issue, because it will take a community to address these. We can't staff the cryptocurrency ATMs or other areas where frauds occur, but we can continually provide education, whether that be through current means or these signs.
Prevention, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Are there other members of the public that would like to testify? So please come forward now.
Afternoon. Chair Carlson, members of the council. My name's Ben Peterson, and I'm here on behalf of the Nebraska Bankers Association. Councilman Becky, I think I might have an answer for the question you just asked, which is typically, and I can speak to it in the context of like ATM, and how those spaces are reserved, usually, a person who provides an ATM service will rent those places from...
Yes, I run out many ATMs to providers across the community, and they usually pay a monthly rent?
Yep. That's kind of how I understand it.
That extends to cryptocurrency as well.
And that's how I've understood it, to extend to crypto machines and kiosks as well. So at any rate, my name's Ben Peterson, and as I said, I'm here on behalf of the Nebraska Bankers Association. I'm general counsel for Security First Bank. My bank is a community bank that has served Nebraska communities throughout the state for over 100 years. Security First Bank is committed to the well-being and security of our customers and the City of Lincoln's residents. I'm here to speak in support of this ordinance, which would require warning signage at cryptocurrency ATMs within the City of Lincoln. Cryptocurrency ATMs offer convenience to consumers looking to purchase cryptocurrency, but they've been shown to be an effective conduit for financial scams and fraud. These scams target vulnerable populations within our community. However, the scams are convincing, and they're complex, and they've been shown to be effective against financially sophisticated consumers as well. This ordinance provides an inexpensive and common sense safeguard for consumers who are often manipulated with misinformation and a systematic and artificial sense of urgency to complete a transaction. The proposed ordinance is a measured and practical step for enhancing consumer awareness. By requiring clear, visible warnings about the risk of cryptocurrency and the potential for fraud, the City of Lincoln can help prevent financial exploitation. This ordinance won't stop this kind of fraud in its entirety, but if it can have really any impact in reducing the frequency of this kind of crime, it's worth this minimal effort. I'm uniquely positioned to stand in support of this city ordinance. I'm new to Lincoln. Before taking my position with Security First Bank, I was a consumer protection attorney for the Wyoming Attorney General's Office. I've had the opportunity to sit across the desk from devastated victims who've lost sums for which they'll never recover in their lifetime, who are facing bankruptcy. Far too often, our investigations were fruitless. They didn't go anywhere, and they were unsuccessful. Oftentimes, funds are funneled out of the country, or in these cases, they would become untraceable after they entered the blockchain, having no realistic path to obtain restitution for victims that lost their savings. I've seen first-hand crimes like this, and crimes like the ones this ordinance can help to prevent, impact victims and their families. I've been witness to how significant financial loss suffered by an older family member on a fixed income is a burden that falls not just on the victim, but also on their families and their communities. Crypto and other digital assets are minimally regulated, if regulated at all. That fact, combined with the prevalence of the fraud being committed through crypto ATMs, provides a strong basis for the ordinance being presented here today. In my experience, the most effective protection for vulnerable adults in our community is through outreach, is through education, and is through increased awareness of the potential harms that exist. I'm here because my community bank takes pride in our role in serving and protecting our customers' financial interests. When our customers suffer financial strain, they struggle to pay loan commitments, they struggle to maintain positive account balances, and that stress can trickle down, causing the bank to suffer losses. Those losses can restrict a community bank like mine from effectively providing financial services to the community, to the detriment of that community. We care deeply about our customers and the communities we serve, and the bottom line is that this ordinance can only make our community safer, and it has the potential to decrease fraud and uphold the integrity of our local economy. I appreciate the city council's consideration of this ordinance, and I encourage you to approve this logical step in protecting our constituents, my customers, and the community to which we all belong. Thank you for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd stand for any questions. There are any. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the Lincoln City Council, my name is Joyce Beck. I am the volunteer president of AARP Nebraska, 306 South 13th Street, Suite 201. I am here in support of the local ordinance aimed at protecting the citizens of Lincoln from scams involving cryptocurrency. This ordinance would hold businesses that operate cryptocurrency devices accountable for placing appropriate warning signs, signage on these machines. Recently, I took part in a, as a volunteer effort in Omaha, to ensure proper signage was on display in cryptocurrency devices, as required by that city ordinance. I went there intending to educate the businesses, but instead, I was educated by the businesses on real-life examples of fraudulent use. I'd like to share some of the stories that business employees recounted to me. One incident involved a man who entered the store with a significant amount of cash, looking extremely distressed. He went straight to the cryptocurrency machine, and he began frantically to inserting the money, following the instructions that were provided for him. Several employees approached him to ask him what he was doing. In a panic, he said that he needed to deposit the money quickly to save his grandson. The employees suspected he was being scammed, and they encouraged him to call the police, but he refused. He claimed that if he spoke to anyone, his grandson would be harmed. The man returned multiple times, each with a large sum of money to feed into the machine. Eventually, his wife came into the store in tears and revealed that her husband had emptied their savings, he had drained the retirement fund, and he had mortgaged the house, all under the pressure to provide more money. She pleaded with the employees to open the doors of the crypto machine and return their money. But of course, they could not do that, because the money was lost forever. In another case, a woman visited the store weekly with $300 to send to her online lover. When employees tried to intervene, she showed them a picture of the man, insisting that he was real and that he needed assistance. The employees pointed out that the photo had been altered to make it appear that he was from Nebraska, but she remained convinced of the authenticity of that photograph. There was an incident also where a clerk received a phone call to the store instructing him to empty the cash register and put all the money in the crypto machine, saying that he was the owner of the business. When the clerk questioned, when the clerk started to empty out the cash drawer, another clerk came along and questioned the first clerk's actions. They both turned to verify the request with the actual owner, who confirmed that he had not made that demand. And I heard that in more in one business that I was in. These incidences do not happen in New York, and they don't happen in Seattle, they occurred right here in Nebraska. I urge you to advance the ordinance to protect other Nebraskan citizens from experiencing similar scams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Kevin Johnson, and I live at 3045 Laredo Drive, District D2. Thank you. This isn't going to take very long, because you've heard a lot of examples that I was going to give to you. I work for AARP Nebraska's Fraud Watch Network, and part of what we do is try to educate folks about identifying these scams, how to prevent them, keep them out of trouble. And we, of course, wholeheartedly endorse this. Part of what we do is have a helpline, and most of the examples you've already heard have come off of that helpline. And I'm sure as you heard them, you were doing the same thing I did when I read some of those, was how in the world can people do that? Well, it's pretty easy for us to sit here and armchair quarterback. But these people that do this create a heightened sense of emotional state, they create a sense of urgency, and they use fear tactic to elicit fear. We've heard how serious the issue is, how fast it's rising at the cryptocurrency kiosks. As an example, I just moved back to Nebraska about a year ago, started back with AARP Nebraska. I'm on the Speakers Bureau. I downloaded the presentation on fraud. I looked at it the other days, because I said, well, maybe there's something in there I can use. There wasn't anything about cryptocurrency in the presentation I downloaded. The new one has it, that they just updated, but the one I downloaded back in February did not. One other benefit of these, of this particular ordinance is educating employees. And I do have an example about this. Employee at the grocery store saw an elderly lady feeding the machine. He thought that didn't look right. He thought something's wrong, so he got her a chair. Maybe if he'd have been the one that put the sign on the machine, or had had a little training about it, he'd have known there was more things wrong than the fact that she was having to stand to do that work. So we're not here to indict cryptocurrency. For seasoned investors, it may be a great way to boost their portfolio. Our intent is just to give that one more warning, as has been discussed, to help prevent somebody from putting in their life savings, someone like me, who a year ago didn't even know these machines existed. And I consider myself reasonably intelligent, I was a pharmacist for 40 years. Anyway, we thank you for your attention to this incredibly important issue, and we hope to see its passage in a couple of weeks. I'm happy to answer questions, but as I always do at these, I remind you, I'm a volunteer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to testify? Please come forward now. Please come forward now. Welcome. Hello. And right on the side there is the mic. There you go.
My name's Mike Walsh. I live at 2345 Big Timber Road here in Lincoln, 68520. I've spent about probably at least five years on AARP's Fraud Watch or Fraud Fighters Group that we go out and try to educate people. And the main focus that we try to do is if you can identify a scam, you can stop it. So, you know, we've talked about in this hearing about the end right before you lose your money, okay? And I think the chief mentioned, we need some more upfront, you know, to educate people. And so that's what our Speakers Bureau on this Fraud Watch try to do. And I know when I go in and give a presentation, you know, on existing scams and how to, you know, try to get out of that emotional state, I ask them how many people know what crypto is, you know? And these are all people over 60 that, you know, we're talking to. And I'd say maybe a quarter of them have heard of crypto, but they don't know what it is. So that's, I think that contributes to the greater percentage of the loss for people over 60. So I think if we can, this adds a good stop, you know, before they make that decision, but let's also educate proactively. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Are there any other members of the public that would like to testify? So please come forward now. Seeing them, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 6D, E, and F together. Item 6D, E, and F is text amendment 25012, request of the Planning and Development Services Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 26.07 definitions to add a definition for wastewater lift station by amending Section 26.11039 requisites for final plat approval, Section 26.11.095 wastewater collector responsibilities, Section 26.15.015 information on the preliminary plat, Section 2.23.100 utility installations, Section 26.23.120 easements, and Section 26.27.040 wastewater disposal to add conditions for wastewater lift stations by amending Section 27.02.240 West to add a definition for wastewater lift station by amending Section 27.60020 requirements of Section 27.65.020 requirements to add a conditions for wastewater lift stations for planned unit developments and community unit plans and by amending Section 27.65.070 form of community unit plan in the R1 through R8 zoning districts and AG and AGR zoning districts not within BTA overlay district to include wastewater lift station as a proposed method of providing sanitary sewer service if permitted. Text amendment 25012, application of planning directive to amend Title II Design Standards for Land Subdivision Regulations by amending Chapter 2.00 sanitary sewer design standards, Section II sanitary sewer policies, Paragraph 2.1 drainage area restriction to allow wastewater lift stations to be permitted in limited circumstances by amending Chapter 2.00 sanitary sewer design standards by adding a new section four entitled wastewater lift stations and repealing City Council Resolution A-83112 dated December 9, 2004, policy and temporary pump stations enforced means. And amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 17.60.010 definitions to add definitions for wastewater lift station surcharge and wastewater lift station operating fee and by amending Chapter 17.60 to add new sections for wastewater lift station surcharge when applicable, wastewater lift station surcharge, surcharge formula, and wastewater lift station operation fee when applicable.
Impressive.
Thank you, Sony.
Thank you, Clerk.
Good afternoon still, councilmembers. David Carey, Director of the Planning and Development Services Department. I also have Steve Dish from our department here with me for these items, 555 South 10th Street. Just to kind of really summarize what Sony just read off, we have three related items that are before you for your consideration for hearing today. One is proposed amendments to Chapter 26, which is land subdivision ordinance, and then Chapter 27, which is the zoning ordinance, and then proposed changes to Chapter 2, which is where the sanitary sewer design standards live. And then we have the item for the definitions of, definition of a lift station in Chapter 17, and within that is the repealing of an existing 2004 policy for lift stations. So we're here before you to provide a summary of these items and to talk about and answer any of your questions and to hear from the public on a proposal to update and replace a 21-year-old policy that, quite frankly, was not really usable and hasn't been used very much. We were approached with a consideration, or a proposal, I should say, to consider updating this policy to allow for a development to happen that is related to the item that you heard earlier today, which was the comprehensive plan amendment for the area around Pine Lake Road and 98th Street. So we're not asking you to act on that item today because we do need to consider these items, these changes, to allow for more opportunity for development in our community. A lot of this is based on and predicated on the effort to try to find more opportunities for more housing options in our community, to get more housing to happen in a general sense, and potentially to allow for price point to be a little bit lower for some opportunities for new housing, excuse me. When we were presented this proposal and this opportunity, as we discussed it internally, we ended up asking the question of ourselves, why not? Why wouldn't we update the policy to make it more usable? And that's really where we landed in what is before you today, is the opportunity to have a lift station policy that actually could be used in more instances and more situations. We still are being very clear that gravity flow sewer is the overall policy for our development and growth, but there are some situations where allowing for a lift station to provide temporary service to open up some land for additional housing and additional development is appropriate. So what we have before you is a proposal that does a few things. First and foremost, we're putting it into our codes in order to be very specific about what, how to do this, how to make sure that we're administering the policy in a consistent manner. And within that proposal, we are saying that we can and should reduce the number of acres that would be required to be opened up with a lift station. So the current policy, this is part of the unusability of it, says a minimum of 500 acres. That is a large chunk of land that isn't always, you know, part of what we consider as when we see significant proposals come through for development are not on 500 acres. Besides the fact that there were discussion in the current policy about that being serviceable and how much of a pump station would you need to serve that, as well as have that amount of capacity downstream. So we are proposing for that minimum to be decreased to 150 acres, which allows for some wiggle room when you're talking about a quarter section of land. That is much more common in the arena of land development to see that come through for a significant size development, but that alone would make this policy much more accessible to more people. Another piece of this is that we are being consistent with the current policy in this proposal, that a potential developer of that land that could come in for the requesting the use of this policy to prove that there is downstream capacity. In other words, if we're going to lift waste up and over a ridge to use the existing system, that existing system has to have some capacity. It's kind of a, it's an obvious thing when you say it out loud, but that's a very key part of this. We are not going to be taking away development rights from other people that are already in that gravity flow area, making sure that they still have their development rights preserved. But if there is existing capacity above and beyond that, and that does happen in some instances, in many cases, that's not the case, this would basically say that therefore you can use some of that if you do so choose to use this policy. We are also continuing the requirement that the potential developer of an area of land that's using a lift station be responsible for paying for the cost of that lift station. That is something that is in the current policy, and we would continue that. We are proposing to require a minimum density for the area that would be considered for the use of a lift station to five units per acre. Our typical development on the edge of the community is about four units per acre. We're proposing five units mainly because part of what we want to try to accomplish here is also the provision of additional housing, but also additional housing that potentially can be at a lower price point. We know that there's a lot of cost out there, and so what we would like to do is propose that we have a little bit more density in these developments that take advantage of this opportunity if it's there for them and they're willing to move forward with this policy and implement it. And also, within that context of thinking about lower price points, requiring of any single-family lots that are in the project, that they would have 10% of those lots be 4,000 square feet or smaller, so smaller-sized lots. That is a way to draw down the price point of the lot cost. Obviously, a smaller lot would cost less, so it is a way to kind of start to scratch away at some of that lot price as part of these types of projects that get the opportunity to develop ahead of schedule. Within this proposal is the full methodology of how to pay for this over time, so there's a maintenance cost to these lift stations, and so that is spelled out in this proposal as well, so that there is upfront costs on the developer's part, but then there's also a payment method that's built in until the lift station is taken off and the gravity flow sewer system catches up to it, that the lot owners that are using it have an additional cost on their monthly bill to the city for wastewater and water fees. So that is built into this as well. And I think that I would just end this kind of overview of what we are proposing and then see what questions you have. Really, a lot of this allows for us to better utilize existing infrastructure that's already out there, obviously, using up potential capacity that's downstream that wouldn't otherwise be used, so there's built-in cost there that we could maximize the usage of it. And then also within this, on a project-by-project basis, we're going to be looking at what other infrastructure is available. So water certainly, water in a general sense, not just wastewater, would have to be available to the area that's being developed. In this case, the one that we are considering right now at 98th and Pine Lake Road, for example, has water accessible to that location. We'll be looking at streets as well, and the South 98th Street is a paved street, improved street. So just as a context of how we'd be looking at these projects, we would be better utilizing existing infrastructure improvements and investment that the city has made to further develop and provide opportunities for development. So that is a very quick way to get through kind of the highlights of what is being proposed, and I'll see if you have any questions at this point.
Counsel, questions. Tom.
David Carey, would you say that the lift station equipment has substantially changed in the last 25 years as well?
I think that the equipment has improved over time. There's still costs, there's still maintenance costs, things like that.
But they're used in other communities.
Certainly, yeah. I mean, there are, in certain instances, we have lift stations here being used, and mostly, they're being used to allow for the system in a general sense to work better.
Question's kind of a math question. How many acres in a section?
In a full section? 640.
640, okay.
And again, that would be a square mile.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep.
Counsel, other questions? Tom?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Carlson. I appreciate it. It's been 20 years, over 20 years since the last change in regards to the sewer lift policy. Is this a first step, or is this a change that we may not see any additional changes for another 20 years? Do you have any inkling?
Well, yeah, it's definitely a step to provide more opportunity. As we've discussed this and as we fielded some questions, I think where we're at is that we'll see how, assuming that this would be adopted and utilized in some form, we would definitely take assessment of how it's being used and what happens or what doesn't happen, and we're certainly continually consider, you know, potential changes in the future. I don't know what those might be at this point. We think this is a solid first step to kind of open the discussion up again.
No, I think it's a solid first step, too. My concern is that the acreage requirement really leaves out the vast majority of developments that are coming through the city of Lincoln or even could be considered, as we referenced the map that Danae had showed earlier on her point. You know, oftentimes, we're talking about areas that are already parceled out, and I'm not talking about acreages, but simply places that don't meet the 150-acre requirement that I fear really only caters to the big players in our community. But I agree with you, it's a good first step. And then the ordinance doesn't have in it any sort of square footage requirements on the improvement on the 4,000-square-foot lot, or any sort of price considerations on those lots? And obviously, you can build a $750,000 house on a 4,000-square-foot lot, so is there any sort of guarantee that that lot size actually effectuates into an affordability answer?
It does not guarantee a lower unit price. That's true. We did have that conversation as well. We felt like, just as in a lot of other areas in the zoning code and in land subdivision code, lot size is often used as a, like a marker for things, and it's much more straightforward because that doesn't change, you know, as much as other things can change over time. And so that's how we landed on that, and we've done that in different pieces of the zoning code as well. And so that's really the answer to, like, how did we get to that?
And I appreciate the green space requirements not being counted towards the, you know, I can see the thought process behind there, but I, and obviously, I'm not talking about this specific development, although that is obviously in relation to each other, but I am concerned that that 4,000-square-foot requirement without any sort of improvement size requirement or any sort of specific pricing requirement is not necessarily going to translate into an affordable structure when everything is said and done, although I, once again, appreciate the sentiment behind it and will be patient while I see how that plays out as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment and the point made there. We also did not take the step to say that this was a proposal for affordable housing.
Right.
I think we're knowledgeable enough to know that a lot of these developments on the edge have, you know, costs to them that, you know, it's hard to, it's more difficult to do that. But I would also say that this doesn't preclude that from being part of these projects.
Of course.
And certainly, we would be very supportive of, you know, working with proposals that are trying to get affordable housing built into these projects, true affordable housing. We'd be very supportive of that. We just felt like for this policy update, as well as how we're handling it, that we weren't going to go in that direction, at least at this time as well.
Well, I appreciate the work, Steve. I appreciate the work very much so, and I do hope that this is a first step in what can be a continued conversation about opening up additional housing opportunity here in the city of Lincoln, and, you know, maybe we could talk about 50 acres. Maybe we could talk about 100. Who knows?
Right.
All of these magic numbers. So, thank you very much.
And I'm open to those conversations.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Carlson.
Thanks. Can you talk a little bit more about the Lincoln Water kind of pass-through? Is the thought that the developer would pay kind of that upfront cost, and then the new homeowners would pay the maintenance? Is that the philosophy? Did I hear that right?
This is a perfect opportunity for Mr. Dish to provide some of these things.
All right. Thank you. Handoff, yeah.
So our friends at LTU could certainly do a better job, but I should be able to provide you just kind of a general overview. So there will be some upfront associated costs with determining what that lift station is going to cost. So actually, I'll back up to the beginning. So since every one of these developments is different and every lift station's going to be different, they're going to figure out how many units are going to be basically a part of that development, and then they'll come up with what that sort of cost is associated with the lift station and the force main. That number is then going to be taken, a part of a sort of projected lifespan before it could be served by gravity, and then that cost would be divided by that number of years, divided by the months, and then that would be the surcharge that would be associated with that application. So there will be some upfront costs associated that the developer will pay, and then a lot of those will then be assumed by those individuals. divided by the months, and then that would be the surcharge that would be associated with that application. So there will be some upfront costs associated that the developer will pay, and then a lot of those will then be assumed by those, those individuals using the service. So it's effectively a service charge for those individuals that are taking advantage of the, of the lift station. And then that would go away at the conclusion of the lift.
Great, thank you. Other questions, counsel? All right, appreciate it. Thank you both. Are there, oh, members of the public?
On my way up already. Danae Kalkowski, 1128 Lincoln Mall Suite 105, appearing on behalf of Matadoll LLC. Obviously, we're in support of the ordinance amendments regarding utilization of lift stations for new subdivisions. I do want to thank the city staff for being willing to revisit a 2004 policy. This isn't the first time developers have wanted to revisit the policy, but this is the first time that staff's been willing to take a serious look at it and, and put the work, you know, put a lot of work into talking about it internally and with a potential development to see what we could put together to make it work. So we definitely appreciate the time and effort. I also like the fact that it's gone from kind of policy to be implemented into the ordinance, which then I think Councilman Beckis sometime, may give us a better opportunity if someone wants to make adjustments in the future to some of those criteria. You don't have to get the entire staff to agree to change the whole policy, you'd be able to bring something in front of council to tweak or change a provision of the ordinance. Obviously, we'd still take the review of everybody, but I, I think it provides a better opportunity for further amendment to make adjustments in the future. So I, I like the methodology that we're moving forward with the ordinance amendments. Obviously, the changes will allow a development such as 98th and Pine Lake Road, you know, to move forward with other infrastructure available. This is the last piece, you know, needed in order to go ahead and get some additional units on the market in an area of town that's growing and, and has a demand. So again, thanks city staff. We're supportive of, of the changes and the, and the conditions that they've listed right now, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Are there any members of the public like to testify? Come on down, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Mark Hunsaker. I'm appearing on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Lincoln. We support this change as a first step. It's in, in the direction of making contiguous land, which cannot be served by gravity flow, available for development of housing and other beneficial uses. We also support it as a recognition of the need for additional housing in Lincoln, but we have a few caveats we'd like to offer just as a food for thought going forward. This was drafted for a single project, and at least in our view, the application of these changes beyond that project will be very limited. The planning director has indicated a willingness to revisit these regulations in the future and with a view toward expanding the application, and we, we encourage that. We support ADUs and we support higher density and smaller lots, but we think it's better to encourage those by reducing the regulations that currently prevent it than it is to use mandates. There's no real connection between accessory dwelling units and lift stations. There's no real connection between smaller lots, higher density, and lift stations. The concern is that what you risk is that the mandates create regulatory barriers and, you know, additional costs, and certainly additional costs which you've heard discussed here tonight. Those costs don't go away, they get passed on to the people who buy those lots, whether they're large lots or small lots. And the additional cost of maintenance, which is going to be a surcharge on each of those lots, is also going to add to the housing cost in that project. I, it just will. So anyway, we, we, we support this as a first step, and we recognize that lift, lift stations are a tool for allowing for contiguous property to be served, which could not otherwise by gravity. We encourage you to continue to refine this policy to expand its application going forward. And I'll try to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to testify on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
That concludes section six. We shall move on to section seven, ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. I'll call item 7A, approving the labor contract between the city of Lincoln and the Lincoln M-Class Employees Association for a term effective August 14, 2025 through August 31 of 2027, introduced by Duden.
Salute.
Second. Second by Beckis, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B is request for an ordinance amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, bi-weekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by M. This adjustment is in accordance with the terms of the parties bargaining agreement, introduced by Duden.
Salute.
Second.
Second by Beckis, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7C is annexation 25004, application of Olson to annex approximately 8.56 acres on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Vine Street, introduced by Duden.
Salute.
Second.
Second. Beckis, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 70 is approving amendment number two to the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center conditional annexation and zoning agreement between the city of Lincoln Ring Neck Development LLC and Lancaster County School District, Lincoln Public Schools, for the property generally located at Southwest Holdridge Street and north of West Vine Street, introduced by Duden.
Salute.
Second.
Second by Beckis, discussion. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes section seven of our agenda. Section eight is resolutions, first readings, our items 8A through 8G. Section nine is ordinances, first reading and related resolutions, our items 9A and 9B, and then our pending list is section 10, items 10A through 10C.
Move adjournment?
Second.
Second by Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your adjourn.